Session is resumed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed with additional reference to business and that the Secretary General be directed to read the items, the titles of resolutions and bills as well as committee reports and resolutions, communications, I mean.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Additional reference of business is in order. Secretary General kindly read the title of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. Please proceed.
Additional reference of business. Bills on first reading. House Bill Number 10099. Protecting the right of athletes to represent the Philippines as part of the national team and providing penalties for violations thereof. Representative Tambonting.
Youth and sports development.
House Bill Number 10100. Instilling and strengthening the sense of patriotism and nationalism among the youth through the institutionalization, development, and administration of fundamental and specialized programs in the basic education curriculum in all public and private educational institutions. Representative Tambonting.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill Number 10101. Institutionalizing skills training program and providing job opportunities to inmates in detention facilities. Representative Tambonting.
Labor and employment.
House Bill Number 10102. Authorizing health and allied health professionals to engage in the practice of ultrasonography. Representative Tan Angelina.
Civil service and professional regulation.
House Bill Number 10103. Declaring Maulawin Spring Protected Landscape in Ginayangan, Quezon as ecotourism zone. Representative Tan Angelina.
House Bill Number 10104. Prohibiting the detention of COVID patients in hospitals and medical institutions due to their unpaid hospital bills or medical expenses and providing penalties thereof. Representative C. Alvarado.
Health.
House Bill Number 10105. Criminalizing the use of fake vaccination card and providing penalties thereof. Representative C. Alvarado.
Justice.
House Bill Number 10106. Defining and criminalizing vaccine hoarding and unauthorized vaccination in times of public health emergencies and providing penalties therefore. Representative Vargas.
Resolutions. House Resolution 2173. Congratulating and commending the 13th awardees conferred by the Cultural Center of the Philippines for the year 2021. Representative Vargas.
Basic education and culture.
House Resolution 2174. Congratulating and commending Chief Johan C. for receiving the award for Female of the Year in the 2021 Singapore's World Gourmet Awards. Representative Vargas.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2175. Congratulating and commending the Codilera Regional Science High School Glee Club for winning two gold medals at the 18th Bali International Choir Festival. Representative Vargas.
The Special Committee on Creative Industry and Performing Arts.
House Resolution 2176. Congratulating and commending Gigil for winning bronze at the 2021 Cannes Lion Festival of Creativity. Representative Vargas.
Creative Industry and Performing Arts.
House Resolution Number 2177. Congratulating and commending the Manila Symphony Junior Orchestra for winning gold at the 2021 Vietnam Music Festival. Representative Vargas.
Creative Industry and Performing Arts.
House Resolution 2178. Expressing support for Filipino architects and designers shortly said for the World Architecture Festival 2021 and the World Festival of Interiors 2021. And congratulations to the winners of the WAFX 2021. Representative Vargas.
Creative Industry and Performing Arts.
House Resolution 2179. Expressing the profound condolences of the House on the demise of former Laspanias Mayor Verhel Nene Aguilar. Representative Tambonting.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2180. Directing the Committee on Public Accounts and Committee on Basic Education and Culture to inquire on the allocation and distribution of laptops under the Bayanihan to Recovers One Act. Representatives Castro, Franz, Zarate, Gaite, Kulyamat, Brosas, and Elago.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2181. Urging the Comelec to review the amounts of honoraria and allowances granted to public schoolteachers and other persons rendering election service. Representatives Castro, Franz, Zarate, Gaite, Kulyamat, Brosas, and Elago.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Resolution 2182. Urging the Committee on Public Accounts and Committee on Basic Education and Culture to investigate the lapses by the DepEd in the utilization of funds for the Basic Education Learning Continuity Plan and other observations by the 2020 annual audit report released by the COA. Representatives Castro, Franz, Zarate, Gaite, Kulyamat, Brosas, and Elago.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2184. Calling for an investigation by the proper committee regarding the overpriced procurement of grocery packs by the Quezon City Government. Representative Defense Hor Michael.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2185. Expressing the profound condolences of on the passing of Ms. Venus Reyes Navalta. Representatives Velasco, De Venesia, Benitez, Delos Santos Bolilla, Santos Rector, Revilia Alonte, Barbara Maceda, Makapagal Arroyo, Crisologo Bagatting Saveliano, Lim Tambonting Legarda, Sing Sunmihan, Escudero Castelo, Sangkapan Coangelica, Taduran Kimbo, Suntay Vargas, Bautista Belmonte Rodriguez, Ongroni Baronda, Iregal Robes, Vergara Arenas, Elago, Nieto, Changco, Sagarbaria, and Gomart.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2186. Expressing the profound condolences of on the passing of Mr. Ramon Hopidenya.
House Resolution 2187. Expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of Ms. Virginia Moreno.
Committee on Rules.
Velasco et al.
Communications. Letters and emails from certain provisional governors, city mayors, and municipal mayors.
Appropriation.
Inform the House. Letter dated July 16 of the DTI.
Trade and Industry.
Letters dated July 22 and 27, 2021 of the BSP Deputy Director.
Banks and financial intermediaries.
Letter dated July 23, 2021 of the Chief Operating Officer Tourism Promotions Board of the Philippines.
Tourism.
Letter dated July 28, 2021 of the President and CEO of the Land Bank.
Committee on Appropriation.
Letter dated July 28, 2021, Undersecretary Corporate Affairs Neda.
Committee on Appropriations.
Report dated August 31, 2021 of Honorable Mark Leandro Dong L. Mendoza, Secretary General of the House of Representatives on copies of the enrolled consolidated versions. House Bill 576.
Committee on Rules.
Subpina ducestecum. Pursuant to Section 154, Rule 24 of the House Rules of the House, transmitting the Subpina ducestecum dated July 1, 2021 issued by the Director, Preliminary Investigation Administrative Bureau A Field Investigation Office, Office of the Ombudsman regarding case number OMB-C-C18-0293.
Committee on Rules.
Pursuant to Rule 154, Rule 24 of the House Rules of the House, transmitting the Subpina ducestecum dated August 10 issued by the Supervising Director, LSC Case Build Up Teams, Office of the Ombudsman on case number FFC210054.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of the House, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Hearing no objection. The motion is carried. Privilege R is opened. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Lauren Legarda, Deputy Speaker from the Lone District of Antique to avail of the privilege hour. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Our esteemed Deputy Speaker from the Lone District of Antique, the Honorable Lauren Legarda is recognized to take advantage of the privilege R. Madam Deputy Speaker, Lauren Legarda, please proceed. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Presiding Officer, distinguished colleagues in Congress. It has been over a year since a pandemic broke out and put the whole world into lockdowns, forcing businesses to close and billions of people to suffer. Our health systems were ill-prepared to suppress COVID-19 from claiming the lives of over 4.3 million people worldwide, of which over 29,300 are fellow Filipinos. More than a year later, or one national budget cycle later, I ask this. Where are we now? Are we much better prepared to prevent, respond to, or manage future pandemics? And as many scholarly articles point out that wildlife trade in Southeast Asia risks incidence of future pandemics, are our measures against illegal wildlife trade also sufficient to thwart the spread of new zoonotic diseases? But pandemics are unfortunately not the only threat that we face today. Climate change is a much bigger threat that has already taken so much away from us. It will continue to kill our people, destroy our environment, bring our cities and communities into ruin, and add to biodiversity and livelihood loss if we let it be. The latest report just a few weeks ago from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, which is the world's leading community of scientists and experts assessing the science on climate change, said that humans have already caused a global warming level of 1.07 degrees Celsius from pre-industrial levels. It further stated that, and I quote, "The scale of recent changes across the climate system is unprecedented over many centuries to many thousands of years." Unquote. These latest climate warnings are simply a reiteration of what we already know so far. That the climate crisis is real, that its impacts are becoming more frequent, more severe, some of which are or will be irreversible. And that is urgent because we have little time left before we breach our climate threshold of 1.5 degrees Celsius. Unless we drastically reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to limit global warming, we should expect further increases in hot climate impact drivers, CIDs, including heavy precipitation, associated flooding, intensification of tropical cyclones and storms, reductions in mean precipitation, and increases in aridity, floods, and heat waves in cities. The year 2020 caused tremendous misery and tragedy for all of us. It did not end without leaving another warning. It became the second hottest year on record with only a 0.02 degrees difference compared to the hottest year recorded, 2016. This makes the last six years, beginning in 2015, as the warmest years on record in the period 2011 to 2020 as the warmest decade on record. If we may also recall the successive storms and typhoons late last year that submerged entire communities like never before and dealt around 43 billion pesos worth of damage to our infrastructure and agriculture. In the past two months, Typhoon Fabian, southwest monsoon as well, brought continuous rains and floods affecting thousands of our people. The delivery of government service affected as well. Many said early on during the pandemic that nature was healing as public transport and industry operations were restricted. Indeed, our skies became a bit clearer than before, but we all know too well that this was temporary. For some industries, the pandemic enabled the right environment to boost their production operations, e-commerce platforms, online selling, deliveries became the norm. Consequently, however, this significantly increased our consumption of single-use plastics. In relation to this, we emphasize plastic continues to pose immense waste management, environmental, and public health problems for Filipinos. It is about time that we have a national policy on this, and I hope we could further work with our colleagues in the Senate to follow suit and make this timely legislation a legacy of the 18th Congress. Three critical and interrelated issues should jolt us to reality. The serious deterioration of our planet's climate, the vulnerability of humans to cyclical pandemics, the alarming degradation of our environment and the support system. The year 2021 is a landmark year for the UN Framework Convention on Climate Change and the Paris Agreement as it reconvenes world leaders for the 26th session of the Conference of Parties, or COP26, scheduled in November this year. It will be a make or break point for nations to get their act together and agree how to effectively execute the Climate Treaty, which is meant to limit the average temperature increase to 1.5 degrees Celsius. Earlier this year, the Philippines submitted the NBC, the first nationally determined contribution, the target set by countries to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from their critical sectors. Our NBC communicates a 75% reduction target by 2030, requiring significant amounts of financing and resources which we hope to acquire from developed countries as part of their commitment to the Paris Agreement. Developed countries are expected to mobilize support for developing countries in the form of climate finance, technology transfer, capacity development. And for climate finance alone, developed countries agreed to mobilize 100 billion US dollars per year, starting in 2020 to 2025 for developing countries like ours. Our government, through the Climate Change Commission and various agencies, has been active in these negotiations, championing climate justice. It has been our honor to lead the creation of the Climate Vulnerable Forum, now the main international vehicle for cooperation for countries most threatened by the climate emergency. I wish to emphasize the need to unite our voices with those other developing nations, knowing that the burden falls on us to take the lead in asserting climate justice. Climate justice for us is to hold accountable developed nations for those that have led us to this state of the climate crisis. It is also to demand what is due and fair to us in light of the climate impacts that have hampered our growth through the years. The Philippines is clearly not a big emitter of greenhouse gases. We account for 0.3% of total emissions. We are among the most vulnerable to the effects of climate change, while being hard-pressed to find the resources to make sure our communities can adapt to the worsening impacts. This is why this upcoming climate conference is so critical because it is meant to set in full motion the implementation of the Paris Agreement, which emphasizes our common but differentiated responsibilities, our capabilities in achieving its goals. The provision of climate finance, technology, capacity development will be critical for us to support our climate change adaptation and mitigation priorities contained in our NBC and eventually in our National Adaptation Plan. An analysis by the Climate Action Tracker finds that current climate targets from countries are projected to a global warming level of 2.4 degrees Celsius. It needs to fall below 1.5 degrees. And the global scientific community believes that we can do it and we must do this. The Global Carbon Project noted a record fall in 2020 emissions attributed to the cessation of GHG-emitting economic activities due to COVID-19 lockdowns. This provides evidence that if we could displace greenhouse gas emissions through low-carbon technology at a massive and significant scale and share these technologies with developing economies still struggling with the energy needs, we may realize net zero emissions before 2050 and no longer breach the 1.5 degrees Celsius. We must note, however, the IPCC report emphasizes that much of the impacts of climate change are already locked in. Even if we somehow magically cut emissions to zero tomorrow, we will have to deal with the effects for decades, even centuries. This much is clear. The Philippines and the world must put greater emphasis on adaptation. We can pursue this through measures like investing in renewable energy, providing social protection for our farmers and fisherfolk affected by recurring weather extremes, ensuring proper natural resource management, using geohazard maps in our urban and rural planning, promoting green infrastructure, green jobs, establishing health emergency management systems, encouraging community-based ecotourism codes that promote tourism and environmental conservation, among many others. These are important considerations that we can prepare for in participation as we participate in COP26. Our country needs to do its own introspection. Despite the many environment and climate laws that we've authored and championed these decades, our country's life support systems continue to deteriorate. Earlier this year, I filed House Bill 9181, Philippine Ecosystem and Natural Capital Accounting System Law, which seeks to develop and implement an accounting system which will give importance to the role, value, and impact of our country's natural resources on the economy. In the meantime, it bears noting that it is this chamber that decides on public spending, as we have been doing the past days. We are the major economic driver through the GAH or the national budget. We perform this constitutional mandate in relation to the proposed 2022 budget. We must also realize that if we direct public spending towards this transition, we will be ahead of the curve, able to take advantage of the shift. This is not only necessary, but also urgent. If you recall, House adopted Resolution Number 123, declaring a climate and environment emergency. Almost a year into that emergency, we have yet to see the sea change of legislation that supports our belief in that emergency. A redirection of the budget to opening up opportunities for climate change adaptation, nature-based solutions, small-scale outdoor tourism, and food and water security, and self-reliance. These are massive opportunities for economic advancement. An economic model that recognizes this will allow a quick recovery, which at the same time mitigates. For many decades now, Mr. President, Mr. Speaker, the debate has been whether to choose economy over conservation of natural resources. This is a false dichotomy. The economy and all of society are fully and entirely dependent on natural resources. Our natural capital, which includes our forests, our wetlands, our rivers, our mountains, our seas, and all ecosystems. I seek support of the bill's passage to allow government planners to have a full understanding of the natural capital available and expendable in the pursuit of our national goals. We should not only view our environment in terms of our needs or what it can provide to us, but in terms of the losses if we continue to exploit and extract from it mindlessly indiscriminately. As the impacts of climate change become more prevalent, the higher is a right of the poor to social protection, and the higher is a duty of government to reduce the disaster vulnerability and to liberate them from the vicious cycle of poverty and risk. Risk management should be our standard approach when dealing with the environment. We need to level up and think in terms of systemic approaches. We live in critical times, and I urge this Congress, this chamber, not to let the opportunity pass and show that we did not just claim that there was a climate emergency and then throw up our hands in desperation. We should act and pass the necessary laws to show the way out of it. For the Philippines, climate action, biodiversity, environment protection, and COVID-19 recovery should be synonymous with our country's modernization and transformation towards a resilient and sustainable future for generations of Filipinos. The only pandemic recovery that will serve the last, the least, and the lost will be one that is attuned to the climate pathway. And I believe with the support of this chamber and our dear colleagues, Mr. Speaker, we can turn this vision into a reality. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, Mr. Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the privileged speech of the Honorable Lauren Legarda be referred to the Committee on Rules for appropriate action.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the privilege hour.
With no objections, the motion is carried. Privilege R is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the omnibus approval of the, um, on second reading, the following local bills. House Bill Number 9933, containing Committee Report Number 1104. House Bill Number 9934, containing Committee Report Number 1105. House Bill Number 9935, containing Committee Report Number 1106. House Bill Number 9936, containing Committee Report Number 1107. House Bill Number 9937, containing Committee Report Number 1108. House Bill Number 9938, containing Committee Report Number 1109. House Bill Number 9939, containing Committee Report Number 1110. House Bill Number 9940, containing Committee Report 1111. House Bill Number 9941, containing Committee Report Number 1112. House Bill Number 9942, containing Committee Report Number 1113. House Bill Number 9980, containing Committee Report Number 1125. House Bill Number 10013, containing Committee Report Number 1151. House Bill Number 10014, containing Committee Report 1152. House Bill 10055, containing Committee Report 1156. House Bill Number 9971, containing Committee Report Number 1122. House Bill Number 10060, containing Committee Report Number 1158. House Bill Number 10004, containing Committee Report Number 1147. House Bill Number 9948, containing Committee Report Number 1129. House Bill Number 9985, containing Committee Report Number 1130. House Bill Number 9986, containing Committee Report Number 1131. House Bill Number 9988, containing Committee Report Number 1132. House Bill Number 9951, containing Committee Report Number 1117. House Bill Number 9951, containing Committee Report Number 1117. House Bill Number 9953, containing Committee Report Number 1118. House Bill Number 9954, containing Committee Report Number 1119. House Bill Number 9975, containing Committee Report Number 1123. House Bill Number 9976, containing Committee Report Number 1124. House Bill Number 9982, containing Committee Report Number 1127. House Bill Number 9983, containing Committee Report 1128. House Bill Number 9989, containing Committee Report Number 1133. House Bill Number 9999, containing Committee Report Number 1143. House Bill Number 10008, containing Committee Report Number 1149. And House Bill Number 1009, containing Committee Report Number 1150. And, um, may I request, Mr. Chair, that, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills for approval on second reading. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. Consideration of the mentioned House bills as contained in the appropriate committee reports is in order. Secretary General kindly read the title of each of these House bills, which are part of the omnibus motion, clearly as well as the authors, so that our colleagues may know that their local bills are being mentioned. Please proceed.
House Bill Number 9933, an act establishing a multispices marine hatchery in the city of Calbayo, province of Samar, and appropriating funds therefore, Representative Sarmiento. House Bill Number 9934, an act establishing a mangrove crab hatchery in Barangay Giatag, municipality of San Jose, province of Northern Samar, and appropriating funds therefore, Representative Ong. House Bill Number 9935, an act establishing a multispices marine hatchery in the island Garden of Samal, province of Davao del Norte, and appropriating funds therefore, Representative Duhalii. House Bill Number 9936, an act establishing a multispices marine hatchery in the municipality of Basie, province of Samar. in the municipality of Basie, province of Samar, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Tan Shari. House Bill number nine nine three seven, an act establishing inland freshwater fish hatcheries in the municipalities of Carmen and Brollo de Hali, province of Davao del Norte, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Duhali. House Bill number nine nine three eight, an act establishing a freshwater fish hatchery in the municipality of Bombon, province of Camarinesur, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Bordado. House Bill number nine nine three nine, an act establishing a multispices marine hatchery in the municipality of Tibiao, province of Antike, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Ligarda. House Bill number nine nine four zero, an act establishing a central multispices marine hatchery in the municipality of San Jose, province of Occidental Mendoza, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Ramirezato. House Bill number nine nine four one, an act establishing a technology verification station with tilapia and freshwater-prone hatcheries in the municipality of Santo Domingo, province of Nueva Ecija, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Swansing Estrelita. House Bill number nine nine four two, an act establishing multispices marine hatchery in Barangay Binukawan, municipality of Baga, province of Bataan, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Garcia Jose Enrique. House Bill number nine nine eight zero, an act establishing a mental health clinic in the city of San Jose del Monte, province of Bulacan, to be known as San Jose del Monte Mental Wellness Center, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Robes. House Bill number one zero zero one three, an act increasing the bed capacity of the Davao Regional Medical Center in the city of Tagung, province of Davao del Norte, from six hundred to one thousand beds, and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Nograles, Jerico, Alvarez, Pantalyon, and Almario. House Bill number one zero zero one four, an act increasing the bed capacity of the Eastern Pangasinan District Hospital in the municipality of Tayug, province of Pangasinan, from one hundred fifty to two hundred fifty beds, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Agabas. House Bill number one zero five five, an act converting the La Pas District Hospital in the municipality of La Pas, province of Abra, into a general hospital to be known as La Pas General Hospital, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Bernos. House Bill number nine nine seven one, an act dividing Barangay Pasong Putik in Quezon City into three distinct and independent barangays to be known as Barangay Pasong Putik proper, Barangay Greater Lagro, and Barangay North Fairview, by Representative Vargas. House Bill number one zero zero six zero, an act creating a new barangay in the municipality of Malang, province of Catabato, to be known as Barangay Población B, by Representative Tejada. House Bill number one zero 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 three, an act reclassifying as agricultural land a parcel of land of the public domain located in the city of Ozamis, province of Misamis Occidental, and to open to disposition for agricultural, commercial, residential, and industrial purposes by Representative Obominal. House Bill number one zero 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 four, an act reclassifying as agricultural land parcels of land of the public domain located in the municipality of Don Victoriano, province of Misamis Occidental, and open to disposition for agricultural, commercial, residential, and industrial purposes by Representative Obominal. House Bill number nine nine eight four, an act providing for the construction of a four-lane skyway in Davao City, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Almario. House Bill number nine nine eight five, an act providing for the construction of a national highway from the junction of Linamon, Zamboanga Road traversing Sitio Bukana, located in Barangay Pigkarangan, Sitio Lamak, and Sitio Aloha, both located in the Barangay Población and Barangay Sagadan, all located in the municipality of Tubod, through Barangay Sagadan Baroy and Barangay Baroy Daku, both located in the municipality of Baroy, through Barangay Rauan, Barangay Gumagamot, Barangay Kamalan, Barangay Pasita, Barangay Darumawang Matampay, Barangay Darumawang Ilaya, and Barangay El Salvador, all located in the municipality of Lala, through Barangay Concepcion and the junction of Linamon, Zamboanga National Road, at Barangay Lapinigin, the municipality of Kapatagan, all located in the province of Lano del Norte, and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Dimaporo Abdullah and Muhammad Khalid. House Bill number nine nine eight eight six, an act providing for the construction of a national highway in the municipality of Baloy, province of Lano del Norte, to be known as Baloy Bypass Road, and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Dimaporo Abdullah and Muhammad Khalid. House Bill number nine nine eight eight, an act mandating the construction of the Quezon Vehicle Expressway, and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Suarez, Aleta, Salceda, Taliado, and others. House Bill number nine nine five one, an act declaring the immediate environs of Saint Matthias Parish Church located in the municipality of Tomowini, province of Isabela, a tourism destination, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Albano. House Bill number nine nine five three, an act declaring the Buhi Lake located in municipality of Buhi and the Bato Lake located in the municipality of Bato, both in the province of Camarinesur as ecotourism zones, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Fortuno. House Bill number nine nine five four, an act declaring the So God Zip Line located along the vicinity of Agas Agas Bridge in Barangay Kahupian, municipality of So God, province of Southern Late, a tourism destination, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Mercado. House Bill number nine nine seven five, an act declaring Takapurpurawan Rock Formation located in the municipality of Burgos, province of Ilocos Norte, a tourism destination and providing for its development, and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Ria Cristina and Farinyas Rudy Caesar. House Bill number nine nine seven six, an act declaring the municipality of Doña Remedios Trinidad, province of Bulacan, a tourism destination providing for its development, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Silverio. House Bill number nine nine eight two, an act declaring the Pinagagatan Falls located in Barangay New Tobigon, municipality of Cibagat, province of Agusan del Sur, an ecotourism site and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Baskug. House Bill number nine nine eight three, an act declaring the Basie Revolt Shrine located in municipality of Pedig, province of Ilocos Norte, a tourism destination and providing for its development and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Farinyas Ria Cristina and Farinyas Rudy Caesar. House Bill number nine nine eight nine, an act declaring the province of Ilocosur a tourism de- tourism development area, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Sabelliano. House Bill number nine 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 nine, an act identifying tourism development areas in the province of Isabela, mandating support for tourism development, creating the Isabella Tourism Council, and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Tan Elisa and Go Ed. House Bill number one zero 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 eight, an act declaring the Maera Ira Co., popularly known as the Blue Lagoon, located in the municipality of Pagodpud, province of Ilocos Norte, a tourism destination and providing for its development and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Farinyas Ria Cristina and Farinyas Rudy Caesar. House Bill number one zero 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 nine, an act declaring the Tawot Batok Cave located in Barangay Ransang, municipality of Rizal, province of Palawan, a tourism destination and providing for its development and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Abwegs Deldivar.
Majority floor leader.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that the explanatory notes on the aforementioned House bill be considered as the sponsorship speech. So moved, Mrs. Speaker.
With no objections, the motion is carried. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debates.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. The period of sponsorship and debate is closed.
Mrs.
Please proceed, Majority.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. The mos- period of amendments is opened.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. The period of amendments is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading the aforementioned House bills. So moved, Mrs. Speaker.
Hearing no objection, voting shall now proceed. All those in favor of the approval of these local bills on second reading, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, these local bills approved on second reading. Congratulations to the authors. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House resolutions to the appropriate committees. Eh, House Resolution two zero seven three to the Committee on Trade and Industry. House Resolution two zero seven five to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. House Resolution two zero seven six to the Committee on Energy. House Resolution two zero eight one to the Committee on Energy. House Resolution two zero eight two to the Committee on Public Order and Safety. House Resolution two one zero two to the Committee on Health. House Resolution two one zero three to the Committee on Agriculture and Food. House Resolution two one one two to the Committee on Public Information. House Resolution two one one seven to the Committee on Creative Industry and Performing Arts. House Resolution two one two one to the Committee on Health. House Resolution two one two three to the Committee on Transfer- Transportation. House Resolution two one two nine to the Committee on Public Accounts. House Resolution two one three one to the Committee on Trade and Industry. House Resolution two one three seven to the Committee on Creative Industry and Performing Arts. House Resolution two one three eight to the Committee on Health. House Resolution two one four eight to the Committee on Creative Industry and Performing Arts. House Resolution two one five four to the Committee on Health, and House Resolution two one five five to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Aforementioned House resolutions are referred to those mentioned committees. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, pursuant to our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following speeches to the appropriate committees. The speech of Representative Swansing, delivered on August twenty-three, twenty twenty-one to the Committee on Agriculture and Food. The rep- the speech of Representative Castro, delivered on August twenty-three, twenty twenty-one to the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. And the speech of Representative Elago, also delivered on August twenty-three, twenty twenty-one to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Privilege speeches, as mentioned, are referred to those appropriate committees. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill numbers nine nine four three, nine nine four eight, nine nine five zero, nine nine seven zero, nine nine eight one, nine 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 one to nine 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 eight, one zero zero seven, one zero zero one five, one zero zero two one, one zero zero two two, one zero zero five seven, and one zero zero six two, and House Resolution numbers one seven nine two and two one six eight, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of House Resolution number two one five four from the Committee on Health to the Committee on Economic Affairs.
Hearing no objection, the change of referral is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the session for a few minutes.
Session is suspended for a few minutes.
The one after.
The one after. Tayo calls mo na, then you can support saya. Okay, sige, pwede. Kong X? It's a national bill eh, okay na pa sponsor mo din, para walang maano, tama po na. Mamami or mamyangga or?
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on third reading, House Bill Number 9991, as contained in Committee Report 1135, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Hearing no objection, consideration of House Bill 9991 on second reading. Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9991, an act creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 7th Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipalities of Canadijayan, Valencia, Province of Bohol, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14, Paragraph H of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate, and that we recognize to sponsor the measure Deputy Majority Leader Lianda Bolilia.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Our esteemed Deputy Majority Leader, the Honorable Lianda Bolilia, is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill Number 9991 be considered as the sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join in the motion of Representative Bolilia.
Hearing no objection, explanatory note shall serve as the sponsorship speech. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate our sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being neither committee nor individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9991.
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. All those in favor of House Bill 9991, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9991 is approved on second reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now consider on second reading, House Bill Number 9992, as contained in Committee Report 1136, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Secretary General kindly read the title of House Bill 9992.
House Bill Number 9992, an act creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 5th Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipality of Labo, Province of Camarines Norte, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14, Paragraph F of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate, and that we recognize to sponsor the measure Deputy Majority Leader Lianda Bolilia.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Our esteemed Deputy Majority Leader, the representative of the 4th District of Batangas, the Honorable Lianda Bolilia is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill Number 9992 be considered as a sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join in the motion of our distinguished sponsor.
Hearing no objection, moved and seconded, motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate our sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate on House Bill 9992 is terminated. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being neither committee nor individual amendments to be proposed, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Termination of the period of amendments is in order. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9992.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9992 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now consider on second reading, House Bill Number 9993, as contained in Committee Report 1137, that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Consideration of House Bill 9993, Secretary General kindly read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9993, an act creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 6th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Pasi, Province of Iloilo, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14, Paragraph G of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate, that we recognize to sponsor the measure our Deputy Majority Leader, Representative Lianda Bolilia.
With no objections, the motion is carried. Our esteemed sponsor, the honorable representative of the 4th District of Batangas, Deputy Majority Leader, the Honorable Lianda Bolilia is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill Number 9993 be considered as the sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join in the motion of our distinguished sponsor.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, period of sponsorship and debate on House Bill 9993 is closed. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
With no objections, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments to be proposed, move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9993.
There is a motion for voting, which may not be interrupted. All those in favor of House Bill 9993, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9993 approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on second reading, House Bill Number 9994, as contained in Committee Report 1138, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Consideration of House Bill 9994, for approval on second reading shall begin. Secretary General kindly read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 994, an act creating three additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 11th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Davao, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14, Paragraph L of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate, and recognize to sponsor the measure Representative, uh, our Deputy Majority Leader, Representative Lianda Bolilia.
Our esteemed Deputy Majority Leader, representative of the 4th District of Batangas, the Honorable Lianda Bolilia is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill Number 9994 be considered as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join in the motion of our distinguished sponsor.
Moved and seconded, without objections, motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate our sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments to be proposed to the measure, move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9994.
All those in favor of House Bill 9995, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9995 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on second reading, House Bill Number 9995, as contained in Committee Report 1139, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Before that, Mr. Uh, Majority Leader, let me clarify my ruling. House Bill 9994 approved on second reading. And now, with your motion, hearing no objection to your motion, we begin consideration of House Bill 9995 and recognize our response, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of this measure.
House Bill Number 9995, an act creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the 10th Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipality of Claridel, Province of Misamis Oriental, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14, Paragraph K of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate, and recognize, uh, to sponsor the measure Deputy Majority Leader Lianda Bolilia.
Hearing no objections, motion is carried. Our esteemed sponsor of House Bill 9995, our esteemed Deputy Majority Leader, the Honorable Lianda Bolilia is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill Number 9995 be considered as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join in the motion of our sponsor.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate on the measure, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments to be proposed, move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9995.
All those in favor of House Bill 9995, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9995 is approved on second reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on second reading, House Bill Number 9996, uh, as contained in Committee Report 1140, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Hearing no objection, the motion is in order. Consideration of House Bill 9996 shall begin. Secretary General, please read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9996, an act creating 10 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court and 5 additional branches of the municipal trial court in cities in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Antipauolo, Province of Rizal, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14, Paragraph E and Section 29 of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate, and that we recognize to sponsor the measure Deputy Majority Leader Lianda Bolilia.
Hearing no objection, maj- the motion is carried. Our Deputy Majority Leader, the Honorable Lianda Bolilia is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill Number 9996 be considered as my sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join in the motion of our distinguished sponsor.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory note shall serve as the sponsorship speech. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being neither committee nor individual amendments to be proposed on the measure, move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9996.
All those in favor of House Bill 9996, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9996 is approved on second reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on second reading, House Bill Number 9997, as contained in Committee Report 1141, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. Consideration of House Bill 9997 is in order. Secretary General, please read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9997, an act creating one additional branch of the municipal trial court in the 1st Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipality of La Trinidad, Province of Benguet, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 30 of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate, and that we recognize Deputy Majority Leader Lianda Bolilia to sponsor the measure.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Our esteemed Deputy Majority Leader, representative of the 4th District of Batangas, the Honorable Lianda Bolilia has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill Number 9997 be considered as the sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we second and join in the motion of our distinguished sponsor.
Hearing no objection, moved and seconded, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of, uh, sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
With no objections, the motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments to be proposed, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9997.
All those in favor of House Bill 9997, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9997 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now consider on second reading, House Bill Number 9998, as contained in Committee Report 1142, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Consideration of House Bill 9998, Secretary General kindly read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 9998, an act creating 4 additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 4th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Bakoora, Province of Cavite, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14, Paragraph E of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate, and that we recognize to sponsor the measure Deputy Majority Leader Lianda Bolilia.
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. Our Deputy Majority Leader, representative of the 4th District of Batangas, the Honorable Lianda Bolilia is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill Number 9998 be considered as the sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join in the motion of our distinguished sponsor.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Explanatory note shall serve as the sponsorship speech. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate our sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. Period of amendments is opened. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments to be proposed, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9998.
All those in favor of House Bill 9998, please say aye. All those in favor of House Bill 9998, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 9998 approved on second reading. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on second reading, House Bill number 10007, as contained in Committee Report 1148, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. Consideration of House Bill 100... 07 is in order. Secretary General kindly read the title of the measure.
House Bill number 10007, an act augmenting the retirement, death, and survivorship benefits of the Solicitor General, Assistant Solicitors General, Senior State Solicitors, and State Solicitors of the Office of the Solicitor General, and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate, and that we recognize to sponsor the measure Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. The motion is carried. Our sponsor, the esteemed Representative of the 4th District of Batangas, Deputy Majority Leader Leanda Bolilia, is recognized.
Mrs. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note on House Bill number 10007 be considered as the sponsorship speech of the measure. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, we join in the motion of our distinguished sponsor.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion is carried. Period of amendments is open. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments to be proposed on the measure, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill number 10007.
All those in favor of House Bill 10007, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 10007 is approved on second reading. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move now that we consider on second reading, House Bill number 10015, as contained in Committee Report 1153, and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion is carried. Consideration of House Bill 10015 is in order. Secretary General kindly read the title of the measure.
House Bill number 10015, an act designating the national music competitions for young artists as the National Youth Development Program for Music, defining its role and functions, and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate, and that we recognize to sponsor the measure the Chairman of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, Representative Faustino Michael Carlos D. III.
The honorable Sp- Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Our esteemed sponsor is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, Lieutenant Gentleman, good afternoon. At Chairman of the Committee of Youth and Sports Development, I sponsor Committee Report 1153 on House Bill 10015, other known, otherwise known as the National Music Competitions for Young Artists, Nam- Namsha Act. Mr. Speaker, the bill seeks to designate Namsha as the Philippine Youth Development Program in recognition of its role in developing young Filipino musical artists and talents, and in promoting Philippine music and culture. At outset, outset the National Music Competitions for Young Artists was created by virtue of a Presidential Proclamation Number 1173 issued by former President Ferdinand Martin, which declared 26th and this to December 12th every year as the national for young. Namsha has been a people called vehicle covering is the field of singing, piano, chamber music, that is assembled, and the use of indigenous instruments from all over the country. It seeks to identify and nurture outstanding young musicians to publications, festivals, and work in careers. Since 1993, sponsoring institution of that events has natural center of the Philippines. It also has hosted the competitions and festivals in its venues. Worth to mention that Namsha's program involved indigenous process of acting the best among 1 million musicians, trainers, and administrators from all 17 regions. Indeed, Nam- whole program first discover at young Filipino musicians from every region of the country to an annual competition. Second, developing young musicians to work in training programs and la- enhancing, expanding the position for and performance of Filipino music by the way of development of a repertory of music by Filipino composers intended for young artists and commissioning of or contest pieces for the annual event. It is a dislike that the Committee of the Youth and Sports Development, therefore, most respectfully solicitors for designation of Namsha, the Philippine National Youth Development Program for Music, in recognition of its role developing young Filipino musical artists and promoting Philippine music and culture. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I therefore call on this August number to approve House Bill 1015 under Committee for 1153. So I move, Mr. Speaker. Salamat.
Thank you, esteemed Chairman, the Honorable Mike D. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of sponsorship and debate is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Period of amendments is open. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. Period of amendments is terminated. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill number 10015.
All those in favor of House Bill 10015, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 10015 is approved on second reading. Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration for the adoption of the following House Resolution. House Resolution 1792 are contained in the Committee Report Number 1120, and direct the Secretary General to please read the title of the said resolution. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Hearing no objection, motion is carried. Consideration of House Resolution 1792 is in order. Secretary General kindly read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution 1792, resolution commending the transparency, accountability, and good governance exemplified by the Department of Labor and Employment on the 2019 COA unqualified audit opinion and the international citations garnered by the hashtag BKBK program.
All those in favor of the adoption of the House Resolution 1792, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. House Resolution 1792 is adopted. Majority leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution 2168, contained in Committee Report 1160, and direct the Secretary General to please read the title of this resolution. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. House Resolution 2168 is under consideration. Secretary General kindly read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution 2168, resolution urging the Commission on Elections to establish additional satellite registration centers nationwide and overseas.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt the resolution, uh, title of which have been read by the Secretary General. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
All those in favor of House Resolution 2168, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 2168 is adopted. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, as requested by the Committee on Natural Resources through its Chairperson, Representative Elpidio Barzaga, in pursuant to our rules, I move that we commit House Bill number 9330, under Committee Report Number 953 to the Committee on Natural Resources. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for... Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider the findings and recommendations contained in Committee Report Number 1120 on House Resolution Number 2068, and may we direct the Secretary General to please read the title of this resolution. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Secretary General, read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution 2068, resolution dismissing the complaint for impeachment filed by Mr. Edwin M. Cordavilla against Supreme Court Associate Justice Mario Victor F. Leonen.
Secretary General kindly called the role for nominal voting for the approval of House Resolution 20s, for the com- approval of Committee Report 1102 on House Resolution 2068.
Roll call of members for adoption of House Resolution 2068. Abante. Abaya. Abelia Nosa. Abu. Abuegsaldivar. Abunda. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adyong. Advincula. Agabas. Agarao. Aglipay. Aginaldo. Albano. Almario. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Henaro. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante Matba. Amatong. Angara. Aragones. Arbison. Arenas. Arroyo. Atienza. Omentado. Babasa. Bagatsing. Balindong. Banyas Nograles. Barba. Barbers. Baronda. Barzaga. Bascub. Bautista. Bautista Bandigan. Belmonte. Benitez. Bernos. Beazon. Bilyones. Biron. Bolilia. Bondok. Bordado. Bravo. Brosas. Bulut. Bustos. Kabatbat. Kabotchan. Cabredo. Cagas. Calderon. Calixto. Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Kawagdan. Cardema. Kari. Castillo. Castro Franz. Castro Fredenil. Kayatano Alan Peter. Kayatano Maria La Arne. Celeste. Chato. Chipeco. Chunggalaw. Coangelika. Coelizaldi. Cohango. Coliantes. Crisologo. Kua. Cuaresma. Cueva. Juliamat. Dagooc. Dalipe. Dalob. Daza. De Jesus. De Venesia. Defensor Lawrence. Defensor Michael. De Los Santos. De Loso Montalia. Dimaporo Abdullah. Dimaporo Kalib. Duavit. Duhali. Dutorte. Di Faustino Ino. Di Faustino Michael. Di Ian. Ebcas. Ecleyo. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Erigel. Ermita Buahin. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Farinyas Ria. Farinyas Rudy Caesar. Fernandez. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Frasco. Fuente Belia. Gaite. Garbin. Garcia Jose Enrique. Garcia Pablo John. Garcia Vincent. Garin Janet. Garin Sharon. Gasataya. Gachalian. Gato. Heron. Goed. Go Mark. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Aurelio. Gonzalez Neptali. Gonzalez Sandro. Gorizeta. Gico. Gulyas. Guya. Jaresco. Hataman. Hernandez. Herrera D. Hofer. Halosjos. Javier. Jimenez. Coelisa. Co Wilton. Konghun. Labadlabad. Lakson. Laksonuel. Lagman. Lagon. Lara. Lazatin. Liatson. Legarda. Lim. Limkaytong. Lopez. Luyola. Luzotan. Makapagal Arroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Mangawang. Mangudadato. Marcoleta. Mariano Hernandez. Marino. Marquez. Martinez. Matba. Matugas. Mendoza. Mercado. Momo. Natibidad Naganyo. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nograles Jerico. Nograles Juan. Nolasco. Nunez Malaniaon. Uwaminal. Olivares. Ong Jose. Ong Ronnie. Ordanes. Ortega. Uwano Dizon. Pakya Alberto. Pakya Rogelio. Padearnos. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panotes. Penya. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Puno. Kimbo. Radaza, Ramirez Sato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Ieda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salseda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento, Saulub, Savelliano, Shaw, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sinzuwat, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horasyo, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Taliado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupaz, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unabya, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Vilia, Vilia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call for adoption of House Resolution 2068. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abuegsaldivar, Abunda, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Agarao, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Arbison, Arenas, Omentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Bernos, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bulut, Kabatbat, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castro Fredenil, Chunggalaw, Ko Angelika, Kohuangko, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Dalipe, Dalog, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Michael, Duavit, Duhali, Di Faustino, Di Ian, Enverga, Erise, Escudero, Espino, Farinyas Rudy Cesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Fortun, Fortuno, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Goed, Gonzaga, Guya, Haresco, Hataman, Herrera D., Halosjos, Jimenez, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Lagon, Liatson, Lopez, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Marinho, Marquez, Matba, Mendoza, Momo, Nava, Nograles Jericho, Nograles Juan, Nunez Malaniaon, Uwaminal, Ong Jose, Ordanes, Pakya Alberto, Palma, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Remulia, Robes, Roman, Romero, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Sanchez, Sarmiento, Shaw, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Chutor, Ti Alan, Unabya, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Vargas Alfonso, Vergara, Vilia, Villiar, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, and Zubiri.
With 165 members voting in the affirmative, one in the negative, and with one abstention, House Resolution Number 2068 is adopted. The body adopts the findings contained in Committee Report Number 1102. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I believe Congressman Zarate would like to explain his vote.
I move for the appropriate motion, majority leader.
I'm, I move that we recognize the Honorable Kaloy Zarate uh, for his explanation of his vote. Thank you.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the Honorable Zarate is recognized to explain his vote. He has three minutes.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, an impeachment complaint should be treated as an extraordinary means to make our high officials accountable. Thus, we have to use this with utmost care and due diligence. Thus, I vote yes to the resolution dismissing the impeachment complaint filed against Supreme Court Associate Justice Mario Victor Leonen. Of hand, Mister Speaker, the 201-page complaint did not only comply with our rules requirement that it should be based on personal knowledge or authentic records. In fact, I also submit, Mister Speaker, that even a further perusal of the said complaint, it will show that even as to substance, it failed to comply with our requirements as laid down in our rules as well as on existing jurisprudence on the matter. To reiterate, Mister Speaker, lahat po ng mga paratang na lagay sa nasabing complaint ay basi sa mga hearsay statements and documents, basi sa mga newspaper clippings. Ang mga ito po ay parang chismis lamang, and we cannot rely on my, uh, on chismis, mere say-so, or hearsay to impeach our high officials. This house should not allow itself to be used as a fishing net in a fishing expedition trip of some vested interest groups. At a time like this, Mister Speaker, when Congress should focus on more important matters like the pandemic responses or pandemic interventions, when our people are suffering from the grave crisis aggravated by this pandemic, when nearly 2 million of our kababayan are already afflicted by this COVID-19, when more than 30,000 have already died because of this COVID-19, we should focus our energy as a house on these more pressing matters. At the first instance Mister Speaker presented to us as this one, we should not allow Congress to be weaponized, if I may say it once again, for the sake of some vested interests at the expense of the independence of the other branches of our government, especially the judiciary which have been, has been subjected to attacks these past years. Certainly, if we will stop these attacks now, then we can also help stop this chilling effect that is now reverberating even in the other agencies and branches of our government. For all these reasons I cited, Mister Speaker, I once again register my yes vote in support of the resolution dismissing the impeachment complaint against Supreme Court Associate Justice Mario Victor Leonen. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
There being no other business, I'm sorry. There being no other business that, uh, we wish to transact here in the plenary, I move that we adjourn session until Monday, September 6th at 2:00 PM. So move.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is carried. Session is adjourned until Monday, September 6th, 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Recording stopped.